You are watching Access Laporte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 19th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaportcounty.org.
(inaudible) Thank you, everyone. Full house?
Yeah. It's nice, right?
It is.
I agree with this.
Has the council had a chance to review the meeting minutes from last month?
I have, I have.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
We have one correction on Mr. Kewitz's name.
Thank you. Yes, we will make that correction, I'm sure. Other than that one direction, any others? Questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve minutes from last meeting. I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Moving on to the approval of the fund report. Take a minute just to count what it was through. And Josh, was there anything that should stand out there for any of us?
No.
I didn't think so, but I figured I would ask, just to be sure.
Good, and it sounds good.
Right, correct. All right. Any questions or comments, council?
It's nice to see that 176 number have a positive balance.
It is. Nice to have a positive balance there.
One friend?
Yeah. Yeah.
Which one?
176.
The area of funding.
That's always been in the positive. I'm not expecting a negative.
No, no, no. I'm saying that it's got an actual number there, yes.
Negative zero.
Right.
Right. Hearing no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve the fund report?
Move to approve the fund report. I'll second that.
Thank you, and thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And next month, the next up would be payment of bills. Has everyone had a chance to review those, or? Yeah. I hear you.
Somebody else make the motion.
And if there are no questions or comments? I don't know if everyone's finished looking over the report?
I can ask you earlier.
Okay. Hearing no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
I will make a motion to approve any amount of bills as written.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Moving on, do we have any correspondence?
Yes.
No. And we will move on to reports. Hello, Kate?
Hi. I'm afraid I am not prepared of good news. The SWCD taking over MS4 has utterly collapsed. Two out of the three people that are over in the program have now declined not to do so. We were not notified by them about this. Mr. Wall from Long Beach was the one who told me. So they have decided after reviewing our program to run an ad for an MS4 coordinator, and as of this date, there have been absolutely no replies. Nothing is being done, no complaints are being answered, there's no enforcement, nothing. So the other thing is, in your handout, the top part is the permit, the NOI, that each entity has to submit. This is now due July 5th. It was earlier, but they were having some technical difficulties with the form online. So they restarted the clock once they got those problems fixed. This is beyond my scope of abilities to allow. Once you have a chance to look at it, they want GPS coordinates, outfalls. I don't have that technical-
So these are things that our MS4 coordinator-
Well, previously, when SWCD had taken over, they were going to require that each entity fill these out themselves.
Okay.
I mean, I can help you with some information from the previous permit, and I'm working happy to-
For them to ask.
But once you get into the technical stuff, I don't have that knowledge. Long Beach is going to go out on their own until the county gets their act together. And who knows when that will be? I also received information that I forwarded to Josh Lane, the head MS4 coordinator for IDAM will be starting audits sometime between what remains of this month and November. She's given all the information for those. It's basically good housekeeping and illicit discharge detection and stuff, but giving him the forms to fill out so that he's prepared for whenever this audit happens. I have a feeling, who knows how much grace period will be given before it will happen? She's given out no dates at this time. There's a second piece of paper that is attached, which I was given today. I had approached Michigan City with board president's approval about possibly joining in on their program. Well, you'll see. Co-cost if we contracted with them to do everything would be $31,064 a year. Now, I didn't have a chance to ask questions. I don't know if we can pick just certain items out of there or not.
Josh Lane, I don't know if you know, or Kate, if you know what we were paying previously.
I think it was about $3,500 a year. Oh, $3,500.
So about 10% of what we're looking at here.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I mean, since we don't have the SWCD menu, we can't even make a comparison between the two as to cost because it doesn't exist.
I wonder how many other towns are in this same situation beyond, besides Long Beach?
I do know that Michigan Shores is going to be designated an MS4. Westville will be designated an MS4, but I have a feeling if they're smart, because Purdue is its separate, PNC is its separate MS4, and so is the prison. That, I mean, they're both right there. I could imagine they'll work out some kind of deal. I don't know, but common sense to me says-
They'll be fine.
You know, they're going to stay there. Beverly Shores, Ogden Dunes, and one more have also, they've been declared, there's three towns involved, but they are one MS4 entity. They will also be newly designated. But Pine Garden Parks hasn't. I don't feel, I don't know if we can work something out with Long Beach. I can certainly speak to Mr. Wall about that, if you would like me to. I just, I don't like the fact that we're not covered.
Oh, completely agree.
Yeah.
Long Beach has retained what the buffer fairment-
Well, they, yeah, they, Reggie Kirk follows, plus they also, and I'm going to utter three dirty words, have a stormwater fee. I know the town's been against that, but considering the way things are going right now, that might be something to consider seriously for in the near future.
Because that-
Just as a way to fund somewhat what we, you know, to have somebody else help us, because we're simply too small to do it ourselves.
Yeah.
So there are some decisions.
I don't think that we can join Michigan City for the cost that they want there.
No, we can't afford that. Yeah. I was kind of disappointed with that. I was hoping that would be our Ann Mary.
Although I don't know what this one-
MCM1 is that? A second decision? MCM1 and 2 are public outreach and education. Oh, boy, it's been so long since I hit.
Okay, so these are just different designations of the program?
Yeah, good housekeeping, unless discharge, post-construction, pre-construction. Those are the minimum control measures that we have to cover in the program.
Yeah. That's, I think that's way beyond our budget.
Yep. Beyond, well, clearly it's beyond our budget. What was all this brought on you?
That I just received this afternoon, the Michigan City proposal.
Got it.
And the solid waste district kind of fell apart last month, month and a half, really.
Well, honestly, it wasn't going anywhere. In the last meeting that we had, someone in charge said, and I quote, "We don't know what we're doing." And I think that pretty much summed up the whole thing. They weren't focused on getting some grants, and they could all of a sudden have automobiles where Rick and Ariana drove their own and were only reimbursed for mileage. It was nothing but criticism of Rick and how he ran the program.
And he ran it really good.
What he had to work with, he did.
He did a great job.
But politics got involved and-
Small politics sounds like too much.
That was it.
So council members, what do you think about having talked to Long Beach?
Absolutely. You have a need to target them.
I think it's a little while, an email tomorrow.
You think that's the common sense approach at this point?
Okay.
And then our Ann Mary is probably going to have to be the stormwater. Two heads of Mary, one.
Absolutely.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And even like, they're only hiring, you know, it's, if the county gets their act together and gets the program upright, it's still going to be just one person.
Right.
So, I mean, it's going to go, you know, it'd be really nice if, I don't want to mention any names, but if a certain someone, it would be called back in to rebuild the program, then I would say-
No worries.
No worries, full steam ahead, but we can't afford to wait for that. At least not right now.
No, absolutely.
Maybe when the next permit cycle runs around, rolls around, we'll have a few more options, hopefully.
Okay.
That's it.
I wish you had better news, but we'll take that news.
You and I have been, you know, I have been about this. I mean, I was initially getting my contributions made, and small, but still, I hope to create this program, so it hurts my heart.
We're both fortunate to have you at least on our side for it, so. Thank you, even though it wasn't the best news, thank you. Mr. Wilby?
I don't have anything, but this is under old business, other than their properties along the hardy. Just want to plead of, I did not find any actions that were pending with regard to condemnation or anything in this file, connection wise. So I think based on how we love it, I probably just need to circle back with Mr. Thomas and decide what we need to do to start that process. And I'd see what citations are out there that would give us a basis to move forward. And tracking down a communication on the other with regard to the outstanding Murphy's builds, those are, that's still a process. So we'll do the, everything else is under your own business.
All right. Thank you. Mr. House?
That call referred to me from a resident at 227 Abundale. The call was referred to me by Steve Thomas. Is Steve here? Here, okay. Nice to meet you. The person at 227 Abundale would like to pave the parking, gravel parking area adjacent to the street in front of their house. And they wanted to know what they needed to do in order to be able to pave that parking area. So today I was able to get a copy of the application for building permit along with minimum standards for drives and off-street parking areas. And I will, I'm planning to follow up with Mr. Thomas first about this, and then let the homeowner know what it is that they need to do, and we'll go from there.
Okay. That's it? It's a short report, okay? Moving on, anything from the park department? We'll need to contact them and get them meeting soon again. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
I have nothing.
Nice to see you, too. Anything for planning and zoning?
No.
No report?
Not yet.
That brings us to our police department.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Marshall.
Good to see you all tonight. Couple of things, while I see the baseball league is on for all business, but then you want to follow up, I received a call from Ed Schiff, and I met with him both at Conover Park and Nelson Park, and we want to offer some of the concerns about what the town has and the police department has with parking, what our specifics are with that. His, one of his concerns is he doesn't, he doesn't want to take over the responsibility of enforcing the parking, and I explained to him, that's not what we're looking for. We're looking towards you being our connection to the parents, and giving word out to the parents where parking is permissible and where it's not. He's gone through some maps of from Beacon and locations. He's drawing it out, he's going to send it out to the parents, and he's going to take that active role to make sure that the parents are aware that they just can't create a parking spot. So it's nice to have him. I also recommended that for Nelson Park, any contact the churches about using their parking for overflow parking. That's always, in the years past, that's always, had always been an option, but I think they have to do pastor, and it's really, it's up to the church, so I don't know if we can follow up with them or not. But we have talked, a lot of we've met, and we had good discussion. I told them we're advocates for the baseball league, and we're here to help, not hinder people coming down here. It's getting to be that time of year, just heads up, we're going to be deploying the speed limit sign. The cloudy days we have, it won't stay lit, so we're, you know, once we start getting the better weather, it'll be out there somewhere. Most likely, as always, we put it down by the park, because we have so much activity down there during the first, you know, six to eight weeks of deployment, that that's the best place for it. Because speed limits past our parks are 15, and people don't realize that. So junk vehicles, we've been kind of hammering the junk vehicles for the last 30 days. I would ask that if you happen to see any, please let us know. That's been our focus lately. We also had, received a complaint about junk in front of a house, that was one that you sent me. She asked to have until after Easter to start cleaning it up, and we'll follow up with her tomorrow night.
Okay. Thank you.
Lastly, the car, I know last month we talked about the car, and we talked about a 2022 Charger. After our meeting, I spoke with Matt Magnuson from Ford Chrysler, and Matt informed me that he throws a lot of numbers out, he had a large number of Chargers on order from Dodge, and that order, he believes is going to be canceled. On a 63 cars, he believes 60, don't quote me on the numbers, he believes 60 are going to be canceled. He's not sure if the car that he quoted does was still going to be there or not. Or yours was canceled? So the alternate that we went to was he had a 2022 Durango on the lot, came in a couple hundred bucks cheaper in the long run, I think it was 500 bucks cheaper, Josh Lane, than what we originally anticipated, so we're doing pretty good there. I also got a quote from a separate outfitter, and we've saved some money there. And the graphics from Stineless Signs is going to come in at our below budget, so we're doing pretty good on the vehicles. We're still going to be, we'll get to the open right away, as soon as Josh Lane and Matt work out the financing and get that done. We're still going to be at probably 60 to 90 days before all the equipment is in, because there's, it's just a backorder on the LED lighting and outfitting hardware that we need.
Okay.
So other than that, we're rocking our own, we continue to work alone.
Will we be able to use the graphics that were purchased?
No, I'm sorry.
No.
I did not bring that up. When I called and I spoke with them about that, they said they would not recommend using them, anything that's been sitting for more than six months, because they start to shrink, and then it'll start to crack once they start installing it. And they said, yeah. They anticipated us getting the car much sooner than we actually did to use them, and then, so we can't.
That would've been nice.
What's that?
It would've been nice.
It would've been nice. We're going to take advantage of this opportunity. I don't have a lot more fun with me, but if you can picture our graphics on our car in the front, there's a star, and it's got the eagle, very similar to the eagle on our patch, well, if we change that out and we put the seal to be in, we're going to do that also on the car, so everything, we're trying to go for uniformity. You know, it's been my goal for years, and it's just something that you can't do right away, so now's the time to do it, change that from the eagle to the state of Indiana seal. So more represents we're a state agency.
Well, hopefully we'll have everything in place soon and get moving forward on the car.
Yes, I did speak with the bank. She was rushing to get some rates today. I just sent it to the SBC Global, and I can't access that email all the time. Kind of a business. So we are working on it, yeah. We are working on it.
What's the plan for the old car then? We're not getting rid of that at all. Okay, yeah. I was going to say, if you were going to, you know, in the past, you've always put it up to where somebody, you know, summoned to a dealership right now would be sore out, but if you're keeping it. There's, it's insane the number of police guards that do not exist out there. I know Long Beach was having problems, and Port City was having problems, Michigan City's having problems. I don't, we just stumbled, and there was a car sitting there, I'm like, yeah, that'll work for us. That's what we're going with, but we got lucky in life, didn't we?
And this will be Nick's car?
Correct.
And he's comfortable with dragging the Durango?
Yeah.
You and I have talked about that, but-
We've spoken, he and I have spoken. I've actually showed him a picture of the graphics, and we both rejected the first round of graphics, they were too small. So we're working with, yeah, it's, because it's got to look aesthetically pleasing on the side. If it's not, then it'll bother us until the day we get rid of it, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments received? Thank you, as always.
As always, I appreciate your support, we appreciate your support. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you. Anything for Mercy?
I do have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
In person.
I almost forgot, there's a guy hiding back there in the back, trying not to do this report, from the street department. How are you tonight, Mr. Service?
I don't know. Let's see what kind of questions you guys got. Hammering out all limbs and everything, trying to get all leaves picked up still from last year. We got two more shots we're going to get out for the springtime still. Everything else seems to be going pretty decent at the moment, so we got another, they just dropped another ton and a half of road patches and picked up some. So I think we're over six tons of road patches here so far, ready to lay down on the streets. And that is primarily the mains. We really haven't even touched the side yet.
Wow.
So.
You've been renting a compactor, is that what you've been doing?
Yeah, we've been renting a compactor. Just about, I've looked at them, they've been there roughly 12 to 1900, depending on what you get, so probably look at that possibly next year, but it hasn't, we haven't touched even close to that for the days we've rented.
That's it?
So, you know, just thought it was smarter to do it that way at this point in time. So, and I think that's about where things lie right now with us.
Do you know if they hit the 5013 Greenland?
I believe they did, because they said when they went out, they went back over to, they started just over the mains again.
Okay.
And I believe they did. I had not gone back by there, actually, I've gone by there, but I didn't really pay attention when I did. So I've been watching for-
Must not have been that bad if you didn't.
Well, right, no, it's, it was one of two.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them will probably back up. And I know the ones up on Greenland are starting to pop, we're starting to pop, yeah, but with this cold and the rain and warming up, it's just, it's not good for it. So, but we're still trying to get those mitigated as well as we can, and obviously with all the rain, it's hard to do.
Well, I haven't heard anything more from her, so I'm taking that as a good sign.
Yeah. Exactly. Best sign, exactly.
So you said you're doing two more rounds for leaf pickup, two more runs. Do you know which days that you're planning to do those, weather dependent?
Potentially Friday, and then next week should be Thursday.
Okay.
I always try to do it at the end of the week, and because of scheduling and that, with two of us being in the fire department, you know, we have to kind of do it on the one single day, which basically is our C-shift days, because both of us will be there, Rob and I will both be there, so it just works out best that way.
So that'll be the 22nd and the 28th, potentially?
Yes.
Okay. Would you mind if we announced that publicly? Just to kind of, and saying weather dependent?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's perfectly fine.
What happens if weather is not co-occurring on either of those days? Are we extending it one time?
Looks like Friday may be a question, but, or this week may be a question, but if it isn't, and we have to extend it out into May and do another round, we'll just, we'll see what's out there. Because if it's a small enough amount, like there was that huge pile actually right over by your house, that was on Black Oak, across the street, down a little bit, but there was snow in the bottom of it still, when they went with a loader to pick it up. So we can grab it with a loader or something like that, and get it out there.
Okay. So either way, we'll get it at least through the end of April?
Definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
And then if we need to extend it, then we'll announce that, too?
Well, yep, we'll play by it.
Okay. I just know that a lot of residents are asking which days we're planning to go out, and that way, at least we can give them an idea of what days, potentially, so they can, they can put something out there.
No, he was adding, you're going to draw some, but you do limbs separately from the leaves?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. They have to be done separately, the leaves they put elsewhere because of the city and stuff in the leaves, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's all separate. But, you know, we're picking up the limbs, the bags, we're still doing that, too, right now.
Okay.
Yep.
So I have some limbs behind my garage, so should I set those out at the end of Blessin' Street, right at my back gate?
How big?
10 feet?
Oh. Yeah, we'll come, yeah, do with them Blessin', and we'll come down there with the chipper, because we've done that already twice also. Go out through with the chipper and chipped up a lot of, you know, the big stuff from the winter.
When would you like me to set those out, when you, how many feet?
Actually, we'll probably go with the chipper on Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. I'll set them right?
Yeah, right where we found the snow.
Exactly.
Where we found the snow, right there, right? Yeah, so, no, but no, if you, if you do wish to some there, because I know there are some other limbs in town, and a lot of those limbs and stuff like that, it's just easier to take the chipper over there, shred it up, and then just take the dump truck and-
Yes, the chipper would be awesome for that type of branch, definitely. Then I might shake that up and haul it away.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you. So the other question that I had was what Kate brought up last meeting about Chappala and that with the tree trimmers for NIPSCO, have you seen any more issues from them?
No, actually, we had, before that, we had several issues right here. I got with the supervisors, we met with two of the residents, things got cleared up real quick, they brought out the paperwork that NIPSCO sends everybody-
Got it.
-to, because in the area you're speaking of, I, that was where I first got the supervisor's name and number, because we were driving through there, and I saw the stuff piled.
Right.
So I went down the road, I saw just a pickup with Davies on it, and I'm like, hey, you know, your supervisor's like, yeah. I'm like, I just want to know what's going on, because we're not going to come back through and clean up all the stuff in the street.
Right. Well, and they're supposed to clean it up anyway.
Well, but they can also have signed by the homeowner. When NIPSCO sends it out, the homeowner can say, leave all the stuff there, you know, cut, I'm going to burn it, or I'm going to use it.
Got it.
So he showed me, and actually, I have it on the email still, the information that he sent me about those properties that they requested to have the limbs cut up and left there.
But Davies still should be stacking it in the town right away. But Davies still should be stacking it in the town right away.
This is true.
Right.
And that's very true. So, and again, now Davies started this year with it. He used to be asked for them.
Right.
And so, you know, but they said. If it's, you know, they'll go in and shred everything if they're supposed to get rid of it.
Right.
But, and I did see quite a mess left out there on the roadway too.
Right.
And that's why I said something to them right then and there. I wanted to make sure that, you know, hopefully we didn't get into some other issues throughout their timing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a continuing issue with them that way.
No, no. They, everything else, it was just a question on some trees that were cut and some that were butchered. And I kind of got the supervisor with the thing and they kept calling Star and Josh Lee about it. And I was like, listen, I went out there and I told them, I said, Towne Troick has nothing to do with this. It is NIPSCO, it is Davies', and it is you.
If the trees and Davies' limbs, they can pretty much do whatever they want with it.
Yeah, because the one guy complained about how bad they hacked his tree. And I introduced the guys. I said, you deal with him, you deal with them. I'm out of this.
Yeah.
So, but, and I believe that's where we left it after they called us, so we confiscated Josh Lee the information for the people. And I haven't heard anything else since. And that was early. That was a couple of months back.
All right, good. All right, thank you, Joe.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right, moving on to old business. Let's go over the baseball MOU first.
You approved one that was approved last month. As Marshall Dick indicated, Ed Shin, being thorough, he just wanted to make sure he had the right information and diagrams. We thought that was the resolution and that he, I think he originally came back and said there's already had a couple of changes. And the only significant change is to paragraph 2D. They just added that the part will inform because they didn't think it was clear who was going to inform them, even though Ed was going to put that in the packets and inform. So that's it. And then ultimately, the date from April 1st to April 9th. There's no material changes. So I'm sorry to bring that back before you, but they have changes after they approve it, so.
I don't think those are that major changes.
They help you out and.
They do. They absolutely do. Any other questions or comments about this?
No.
What are you the motion to approve?
That version and sign it, then I will.
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the, with the city of Michigan City for the use of our baseball diamonds as presented.
Thank you, Kyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Next up, ARP funding. We, as a council, need to make some decisions on this ARP funding. We can't all have lost revenue because it's under the threshold. However, I know we need to use some of it to pay for the police car and the outfitting. So I think we need some formal motions for that, do you know?
Yes.
We need to have a plan.
There is a standard deduction or a standard exemption of up to 10 million.
Right, right.
So.
But do we want to designate the other amount for Steve's car or just take that out of the lost revenue amount that we're claiming?
Because if we, if we claim it as the standard loss, it doesn't have to be encumbered.
Right.
Correct.
Correct. So that's up to you.
Is everyone okay with that?
I move, I will make the motion to claim the standard deduction of the $10 million.
And I'll second it.
The only question I have is that we wanted to do essential worker pay out of that funding.
I understand. And we actually had, I believe there was motions that were made that were.
To have a maximum amount of that last month.
Right. So that should be taken care of in that motion.
So then the rest of it would be for?
Well, during that meeting, you guys discussed, you guys wanted to see the amount of hours that everybody worked.
Right.
So the very next day, I sent you off.
Right, so we have to finalize that still. We can't just go out of last month's motions.
But that motion just set aside that amount not to exceed.
True.
But I'm pretty sure we're gonna have that on the report once we start making.
We're gonna have to designate it that way. That's what I, yeah, right.
Because it's not just going to drop into the general.
It's not just going to be a blanket. You can spend whatever you want.
Got it. And that's on us to be the custodians of that fund.
Exactly. Exactly. So when we, when we say we want to do the essential worker pay, I know it would be nice to get some of that started, get that ball rolling because they, you know.
Right, I understand.
People that are eligible for it have been waiting for it. So we're willing to make some decisions on that.
Okay.
Do you want to do that tonight? Or do you want to have another meeting for that?
All right. It's not just me.
Everyone, I think everyone else has the number of hours that we're forwarding for that in front of them tonight.
No.
That was for our people?
Yeah.
I don't know if you got my email or not, but I went through it. I am, I did a graph.
Okay.
And this number here was just a random number that I put in there. And what this is, it takes the percentage of hours worked as a whole and then applies it to each person based on what percent of the whole they worked. So by changing that number, it adjusts their.
Their figure.
Yeah, which I don't have my glasses. Fit better in my hand, I guess, sort of adjust that column.
So if we need to redo this, you've got this in?
Yeah, I can do it on my phone and tell you what the amounts are. Well, of course, the amount's not gonna, the individual amounts will change, but this amount is.
Right, that'll stay the same.
That's just a decision that you make.
Right. I'm totally good with that. That, yeah.
And again, that's just a random number because I was a total.
Did we pass that down to the neighbors who need it?
I like that distribution too.
We're looking back at the minutes.
Mm-hmm. So we had the policy meeting that we had on 3/22. I haven't had those notes with me.
Is that where we decided that?
Yes, where we designated the amounts. The amounts that we designated were done on the 22nd.
Correct.
So, yeah. Did we have $2,000 left? Other than, looks like you have yours left with you.
Uh, this is from.
We really, we started discussing it and we stopped discussing it because you guys wanted to see the hours. That's where we tried to let it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, oh, there we go.
That was a special meeting.
Yeah, because for the three of us, here's 2,006. And if we do that, that's eight. And then we still have money left over for the other part-time workers too.
500 each on part-time?
Right. So that's nine. We're totally within that.
With respect to.
If we go with what Steve provided, yep.
Because that's equivalent of the one full-time officer.
Right.
Now, do you make a, do you look at my notation on there so you know how that was, who was included?
I got it. And I appreciate this too because basically, I mean, this is a decision that you need to be involved in also. So I'm totally good with this.
I like the figures that you gave us.
Absolutely.
Can you give that to Josh Lee? So she's got that for the file?
Yeah, we're totally within, yeah, we're completely within that budget for that.
So, so then the motion on the floor stands as the $10 million coming out as lost revenue.
Correct.
We claim as lost revenue. And then outside of that, then we would have the money that we have previously designated for essential worker pay.
Correct.
And those amounts that we designated, including this equivalent of a fourth officer.
Yes.
Okay, and everyone's good with that?
I'm totally, yeah, I'm absolutely good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
So we've got a motion in second? All in favor?
Aye.
So that passes. So then our essential worker pay amounts are set under that plan. And we got the destination of the ARP funding to be claimed as lost revenue. All right. Takes care of that, that makes your job a whole lot easier, I'm sure.
It does.
In some ways.
It does. But there's still the question of, you guys said at the March 22nd meeting that you were gonna pay Jim Switzer.
His family.
His family.
Right.
Right, and I know that.
I don't believe we got the answer on whether we could or not.
That didn't work for us at the top of the year. And that's not because of, it happened. It's because we appointed a different optical inspector.
Seven.
And that was his son that we appointed?
Right, David.
Yes.
Where is David?
He doesn't come to meetings.
So we only have two inspectors, if I remember, that we were looking at paying.
That puts us nine, with everything, that puts us in 9,500 without even paying Mr. Switzer's family.
Right, that was, that was only paying Mr. Thomas and with Mr. Thurman.
Correct.
Mr. Thurman.
The two or two fifty, right?
Right, yes.
Do we have a favor for Mr. Switzer's family?
No.
We didn't have that included, no. Because we weren't sure if we could or not depending because he passed during that time.
Your premises was to stay consistent. So employees that are no longer working.
I unfortunately think that we probably cannot do that.
Right.
If we're staying consistent. So. So there's our answer.
So that puts us in 9,500 then.
Okay, so there's our answer. So we would not be paying his family for that.
Right, okay. But 250 for?
Yes.
Both inspectors.
And, um, street department?
Street department, we have two employees at $500.
Yep.
Okay. That would be Rob Steinborn and Joe Zertz?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Moving on.
That's taken care of.
That's been hanging out there for quite some time.
That we've been waiting entirely too long to handle. Employee policy, Mr. Wobey?
It's both Ms. Krieger and she is absolutely interested in working with the town. She suggested a few different ways that she could work on a project. It was, I discussed it and was assured she worked with the town of Long Beach. Now, $50 an hour is kind of a standing rate. She was actually very appreciative of even the contact and the opportunity. So what she would do is prepare, if you're interested, prepare a proposal for services.
That's on the front.
And you can decide. And I think the employee too, she could assist. And she provides for that town as well, some HR services. And again, rather than, obviously, you can decide, she'll prepare an agreement for you and then you can decide project basis. But it seems to me that the hourly rate of $50 an hour.
$50 an hour is outrageous.
Nope.
For that service.
So if you're inclined, I'll just have her send it forward and go on to you and get that moving forward.
Counsel?
I'm all for it.
I, I think it's a great idea.
$50 an hour. Do you even make a motion for that? Pretty reasonable. Considering subject matter for sure.
Can we have a motion to allow Mr. Wobey to go forward and talk to, reach out to Ms. Krieger?
I'll make a motion for, and reach out to her.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'll second that motion.
Kyle, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're on to refuse adjustments.
I, I address mine already, so.
Yes, last month, you guys agreed by motion to adjust Michigan, on Michigan Boulevard, Mary Fox.
Yeah.
And then I got a phone call to hold off because you guys were going to do something. You were going to speak with her regarding cleaning out the property.
Steve was looking to.
Yeah, the condition of the property is deteriorated, they're just not taking care of it. And they, they have a couple of junk vehicles back there, and my suggestion is, you know, we need to make sure that she's in compliance with her property before we. My suggestion is before we give her break on refuse.
Do you know if those are hers, or if those neighbors, or?
Her tenants.
I don't understand, I.
I think it's their kids, to be honest with you. I don't know, but we also found out somebody's living in there now. And we look through the ordinance, and we don't see anywhere in there that would prohibit somebody from living in a commercial property. That's not, you know, forgive me, I'm not the only person, that's why we have guys like this.
Or maybe my next question.
I don't know what it's zone, but.
It's zone commercial.
But I don't know what that use is, so it might be zone commercial, but the uses in it may, may allow, and right now it's an office building.
Right.
So. I think those are, I could get that answer for you, but I don't, without looking at the uses that are under that designation for the town, I don't know.
So we've held off tagging the cars since we're heading until we, you know, we come up with a full packet that we present to the property owner. That benefits not only her, but the town as well.
And I like that idea.
Yeah.
I don't think that should.
By ordinance, we're supposed to tell everybody we're bound, so this, you know, this is.
We're asking for too much to clean up your property, you know, overgrown, you know, vehicles, the junk.
Well, I also think we need to find out if using that and leasing that as a residential site rather than commercial would be allowed.
Okay. So we'll hold off doing anything, my guys won't do anything to that property, like, so we've tagged vehicles. But we won't do anything with that property until, like, you're back.
I'll contact you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any others, Judge? Any other refuse requests to discuss?
No, this I already discussed.
Just the other two, okay, fantastic. Um, street commissioner quarterly payment.
Um, this came up after the first quarter. Our previous street commissioners have received a quarterly payment, but we did have a lot of timeline with two quarters, so I wanted to get that.
We've only reached the one quarter so far.
Correct.
How does counsel feel about that? Would you like to wait until the end of the second quarter?
I think, like I said, it's stay consistent.
Correct, can I get a motion on that?
So if we have a motion to wait until the second quarter?
I move to wait until the second quarter for the street commissioner quarterly payment.
In the second?
A second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I like that we're all being consistent on that.
Yep.
All right, and so we've talked about the notice for the MS four, the notice of intent. Really not certain how to proceed with that, so. Kate's gonna chalk to Long Beach, but.
I actually have that form of contract for the entity that they're using, so I can coordinate between Mr. Wilby as well. Whether that's, you know, that cost or that price type makes sense for you or not, but I can follow up as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Was there a penalty involved with not having a program in place at the moment?
I am not aware of that, you know, this is something that's slower than following the parquet.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of it. I'll, I'll get you some of those answers, and so I'll follow up the chat, too.
Do you know something about this? You just look like you know something, but you don't.
Not on that specific part, no, but we're involved with MS four programs.
Okay. All right. Matt Reardon. How are you this evening?
Good.
Mr. Woodruff, nice to see you this evening.
So based on our last meeting, I just want to make sure, coordination-wise, thought the council thought it was a good idea to see Mr. Reardon, and been talking to Mr. Woodruff, because the property is the subject of this district, still has a little more work to be done. As we discussed, really, you have done some of the things that are necessary to put redevelopment in place, et cetera. Now it's the time to move those forward, so we can take advantage of timing, right? And so you had before you last month proposed a retainer agreement for Mr. Reardon. And so with that, really, I asked him at your, at your request to come, and we can kind of pinpoint, without putting too much definition, because we won't know tonight, lay out some of the timelines and some of the expectations, because there's a lot of work to be done. I don't want to say in a short amount of time, but there's a reason we can't do this. Your retainer agreement, it's necessary for him, and then the rest of it can take off.
So just to summarize where we're at, you know, we're gonna find out pretty quick if this is gonna be allowed in the town, because the first stop in this discovery is gonna be Michigan City Schools, and if they have a problem, you're not, it's not gonna happen. They have to pass a resolution with residential housing tip, in order for the community to be allowed them to perform. There's a way around that, it's the senior housing tip that was newly created as well. That means you can't sell houses to anybody I think under fifty, which means I qualify now, so that's news for me. But I, again, the first stop on this is Michigan City Schools, and here's the project, here's what's going on. I mean, your tax rate is point nine-two of your two-point-eight, so I was looking at the financing, and I know that the town is looking to retain some of the revenue. I think we can get, and I got, we'll be working with the council on this, but I think we'd get pretty close to reimbursing Bruce up to two million, assuming Michigan City Schools says, yes, we need students, yes, we want students. They will. Of the five million dollars plus or minus of the infrastructure costs that Bruce is looking at, I think we could reasonably get him back over a long period of time, about two million dollars worth of proceeds. And it's, I mean, I plug it in five-point, four-point-five percent interest, which is, you know, probably pretty low, but, you know, just looking at the raw numbers. If we're gonna have eighty houses, the taxes are gonna be capped at three thousand a house, you know, if the value's three thousand, or three hundred thousand, right? It's not gonna be more than that. So eighty times three thousand is two hundred, whatever that number is, so two hundred and forty. So, you know, the idea here is to make sure we have that most of the revenue, so that the town gets resources directly. Instead of, first is set the tip so you get it all. And then the other part is what portion of that would go for debt service? It's a shame Indiana requires communities to go through this process like this, where you could do things like notes, like they do in other states, where it's less formal, but the understanding is the same, you'll be reimbursed as you grow. So when Bruce says, I'm gonna build eighty houses, great, you can build eighty houses, they pay taxes, we collect it, we split it, we give you money back, and then the town gets a share. So that's the idea, but, again, the first stop in this, in this discovery is the schools, and then we're going from there. If they say yes, and we say great, and we get on their agenda, they can pass a resolution supporting creating the residential tip. And then the rest of it would be, you know, working with Chris and, and everybody else in town, go through the requisite meetings, and, you know, public hearings related to it, and make sure Tim's comfortable with how it's gonna connect to Michigan City, and how that's gonna work, because that's another stop on this, of us, Michigan City Water and Sanitaria, how are they gonna feel about it now? Why wouldn't they want eighty new customers? Beats me, especially when somebody else is paying for the cost of the infrastructure. But I'm not in charge of those groups, they still have to be asked, and they have to be signatory to what's gonna happen. So that's it, and just a quick summary. How fast can we do this? There's some statutory processes that they have, that are required, that it'll probably end up being three months at the most. I mean, if you really just do it. You know, the level of contact and all that, I mean, I've done it, we're just wrapping one up in a different location, in a different county. It took a little bit longer, because well, nobody did it before, so we kind of know what we're doing with this. And, you know, once the plan's done, this is gonna go through a redevelopment process, you have an economic development commission there, the entity that actually does the bonds, they're not bonds, basically, we think of it this way. We're gonna use Bruce's money to put in infrastructure in Bruce's subdivision, and then we're gonna pay Bruce back for allowing us to use Bruce's money, with a little interest, and that's really how it works. So how soon do you think you'd be going before the city, Michigan City School Board? Tomorrow? Well. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know. See, I'll be happy to contact them.
So we just have to approve this retainer.
And, and, I mean, I'm assuming they're gonna wanna know what the impact would be. You know, the question is, do you want more students? This isn't, are we gonna lose, you know, there are eighty-seven cents of new house, that's, that's not it, it's, do you want more students? And so if the exercise is anything like it was in, in another community, they're like, well, yes, we want more students. We have no problem foregoing the taxes. And that's really the first.
I don't see that being an issue with Michigan City area schools. So what we, what we really need right now is a motion to approve Mr. Reardon's retainer, so that he can move forward on our behalf.
I'd make that motion to approve his retainer.
In a second? Okay, so we've got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Okay.
Can I borrow some of your versions, so that?
Wonderful.
And if they don't stick around, I need to email them, but I'd like to borrow six of your notes.
We will do that before we leave.
Greg?
This is your news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, it doesn't look like we have anything there. Any public comment this evening?
Have a comment?
How are you, Mr. Reardon?
How are you doing?
Just state your name and address.
Yeah, Larry, I'm in Sixpoint Two, Tree Drive, I've been here a third time now on the same subject. So I appreciate the board told me twice that it would be taken care of, and it has months to date, as far as I know.
The trees.
Well, and it's getting to me, though, you promised me six months ago, and I was gonna take a look at the minutes online, but there's no minutes since July last year, which I would firmly.
We'll work on getting that.
And, you know, I'm on the board at, on a sanitary board at the town of Berthardt. I'd highly recommend you go look at their website. Everything is on there, I can find minutes going back ten years, zoning board, I can't find zoning board minutes at all, I'm not sure if they're posted anywhere. But something needs to be done with our website, it's horrible for the town, and residents wanna find out what's going on. I don't know how they find out unless they, unless they come to a meeting, yes. But if I would, I've asked the board for the third time now, this property that I have on this map, it's was zoned, as I said down before, down at the bottom, residential, one-family dwelling. And that was changed by mistake, because the person who was gonna buy, said that that project did not go through, that this thing would stay as it was. And I'm not sure who is responsible for changing it, but who is responsible for changing it back? I guess that's provided.
The assessor's office, the county assessor, now whether or not Beacon gets updated, you know, is a whole different situation.
Could you find out, let me know, who has the ball, when is it gonna change?
I'll actually contact Mr. Schultz myself tomorrow.
Yeah, because Beacon isn't the be-all, end-all.
I understand, that's the only thing I thought I'd go by, and I wouldn't go expect after six months that it would be done. So I'd be like, be notified if it was or not, that's all.
I will talk to them tomorrow, and I'll give you a call.
Okay. The other one was, the appearance of Trail Creek, you know, I think it slipped, I've been here for forty-five years. Now, people parking their cars on, on the grass, people parking their cars in front of their driveways, where they have nothing on them at all. But when I looked down Wellnuts, there's been a mattress laying there right at our line, and it looks like it's on Trail Creek side, if I put a line across the road. But I would think somebody, I'm not sure who somebody is, except for me coming and complaining here, somebody would get rid of that mattress. Either the person, somebody tells that person to get rid of the mattress where the house is at, or, you know, Trail Creek on their own says, let's get rid of that mattress. But the legal, for, for over two months, sitting on the side of the road is not a likely welcome to Trail Creek.
This has been an ongoing issue with us, with our refuse company, and Steve, I'm sure you can, you can speak to this as well, that there have been some large items that they are, I don't know if they're neglecting to pick up, or what the issue is with that. But we've, we've addressed it with them several times.
So what's that gonna do, is it gonna stay there forever?
I think we need to find out what the address is first.
Well, it's right where you're going down, what, I know what's happening. It's the last bounce on Trail Creek, north side of Wellnuts, and how long has it been there? It was covered up with snow for quite a while, and now that the snow's gone, it's more trouble. Now, the snow's not, maybe three, four months, so that's crazy. And who takes the, I guess, who's, other than me coming in here complaining, I shouldn't have to do this, somehow it'd be some system, or somebody that has authority to make it happen. I don't know who that is, but it's.
All of us actually have a responsibility.
I know.
Residents included.
I waited three months, myself, okay, so I'm curious.
The residents included, now it is the, ultimately, the residents' responsibility to call the refuse company for the large item pickup.
But somebody could've just dumped it out of the car, I don't know.
Understood, but if it's still on their property, they should be calling and saying, you know, hey, we have this item. Whether they call the town hall, or whether they call the refuse company.
But come here today, how long would it be there? I guess that's the point.
I haven't traveled down that part of Wellnuts, I'll, I'll admit that, for some time, because I haven't had the need to. But I know our police department unfortunately does, and our street department is there quite often.
But somebody, so.
And normally they'll call and take action on it.
Well, there's things I see that potentially not taking, I know there's a house on, you know where the house is, on, on Cool Spring. I think, what, a third of the side is missing on the house, and you can see that.
There is one side.
There is no siding, now.
That's, that's actually been addressed in this.
Okay, well, you just started looking around, and then Scott brought it up, same thing.
Yes.
No, Scott brought it up in a meeting, that was six months ago, I guess, you know, coming to Evergreen Plaza. Now, the two metal posts, nobody wants to take the action, sooner or later, somebody has to make a decision, let's do it, let's get it done. But it's gonna stay there forever. You know, it's been there since they did the road, what's that?
And I believe that's in litigation right now, if I'm not mistaken.
But you have this in litigation.
Well, we have no control over that.
We can't do anything with that, our hands are kind of tied.
Nobody can make Tim move that?
If it's in litigation, we have, and, and actually, I believe that's, that's a state highway right-of-way also.
Then that's hard to believe, nobody can make him move it, after two years? Can you, is that true? Nobody can make him move that piece of metal, after two years?
Well, a couple of things, one, I've answered to the council, and sorry.
Yeah, I know, I know your side, because I'm sure there's a way to get it moved. They have people drive by, and I agree, you're talking to them, so you don't know what I'm talking about, I don't, but I'll.
There are posts that are there, there are sign posts that are there, remaining in the state.
So they lighted Evergreen Plaza sign, they used to be right at, what, Blatner, what is it, dog? Pine Tree Drive and Highway twenty. The, the giant metal, like, I-beams that held up that sign were taken down when they, they redid Highway twenty. So those, that post has been laying there ever since then, and I believe it's Dr. Cora, and, and someone else is in litigation with that right now, so.
So this is for, for when? Now, if you wanna get Trail Creek looked at, somebody needs to be proactive, and not wait and sit and things happen. And that's what I see happening, like the mattress sitting on the road, it's like those, those metal posts on twenty. Okay, we'll just accept it.
With things that we can do something about, we would love to take action. With things that are in litigation that we aren't involved in, aren't, and it's actually like.
Right, because I don't know the law, he knows the law, but it's hard for me to believe the town of Trail Creek has his posts, who've been in high store for two years almost now, and we can't do nothing.
Well, and I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure, that's state right-of-way, that's, that's not Trail Creek.
That's, we would have to.
The state highway right-of-way.
Well, so on this side, I would think that's Trail Creek.
But they also.
There's a certain distance off.
Yeah, okay, nevertheless, it's not a leave it that way, it's fine.
And not that we want to.
I don't want to at all, I feel the same way you do, right.
But Mr. Herbach has advised us previously. Mr. Herbach has advised us previously that we, that that's.
Do we have to approach the board about it, from the board?
I don't know that, that anyone has, because that was Mr. Herbach that thought he had done that.
I would think, or, write a letter requesting it to be moved, and see what is responsible. What's wrong with that?
Mr. Reardon, I'd like to interject, I was doing a survey of the plaza yesterday morning, and I did notice those. And unfortunately, there's a lot more than just those with the plaza.
Oh, yeah.
That needs to be discussed with Dr. Cora, but I had a chance to talk to my bosses about it, and, but, you know, we've gotta address it, and I'm sure that.
Yeah, that belongs to the local.
Other issues that need to be addressed.
Oh, yeah.
Will be brought into the picture. It's, it's, it's a big picture down there that needs to be addressed.
We've got whole swing needs to be cleaned up, I'm just bringing up, I'd be happy to get.
But we're looking at, I gotta look at that big picture.
Well, I understand, but somebody needs to be proactive, and not sit back, waiting for somebody else to react.
So when I talk to them, and then they talk to our legal council, then, you know, we can develop a plan. But I assure you that it's more than just those unsigned.
Those two beams.
Square two beams sitting out there.
I guess one more question, since we were talking about junk cars, the car sits against the road, and the driveway's clean, and the car sits for six months never being moved, what is it? You can go, it's tagged, it's not junk, excluded, but as long as the car's properly tagged, it's not a junk. But it doesn't have to, you gotta, again, it's not uncommon if people don't have vehicles, they don't drive. Yeah, for, for six months, I guess.
It'd be more than happy to look at the vehicle for it, if you wanna get with me, and I'll look at it.
No, it's, it's, if the town likes to have cars sitting on, and it's again, you know, I can't, the way you play.
It's where I saw, I've seen the cars sitting.
Sign Green Tree, but do you just wanna, uh?
Oh, I don't.
You know who I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, the forty-fourth of the cloud, the snow this year, the cloud had to go this way, and, you know, like, down way. It's a bad one. Unfortunately, it's legally parked, but, but no, there's, there's things that need, you know, people need to open their eyes, and just drive down the road and see what's wrong, what needs, I don't know for somebody that takes care of ordinances, and people parking their cars where you park, and they, but, and I just see, I've been here for fifty years, and I can see, and it seems like the last five or ten is the fit, and maybe it's the people, maybe people don't care, maybe people don't wanna push the ordinances, maybe people don't wanna push the people, garbage cans everywhere, sit for a week, never moved, at the curb. I thought we had warrants, they had to be gone in twenty-four hours. Why do you have warrants if nobody pushes it? You know, people either don't have the, the orders at all, so you got garbage cans everywhere, you want to, or make it, make it, people do what they need to be done. But I see garbage cans all the time, every day, I can probably think of a right mouse, and show these to you right at the curb. But as we're proactive, the community's gonna continue to do this. Then it's up to, and up to all of us, but I think it starts in this room. But I hate to see a place go where it's going. It truly is, you have to open your eyes, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Oh, I need to be the one.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavina.
Patricia Pavina, six twenty-two, Pine Tree Drive. And my question is, again, a question I brought last fall, of something I hope this work can take care of, is the lack of minutes, the lack of agendas, I come to a meeting and find out it's a whole subdivision that I know nothing about. I read the minutes, why is there not an agenda, why is there not a zoning, why is there not a meeting, why is nothing posted?
I handle that, I do handle that, but it's only two of us in the office, and we're tasked with a lot of responsibilities. I could use another part-time employee, but until then, my minutes are always back here, you can call us, we can mail to you, we can scan, you know.
Okay, but I'm one person, what about the residents? They, this is not accountable, it is not open. I can't, I could not find out, and I looked, and I looked, and I looked, when you need to meet. I have to go to the old minutes to see that.
I will interject here, because we're not required to have a website, it's not a legal requirement for our town.
This is twenty-twenty.
And so it is, I agree, but it's not, it's not a legal requirement that we have a website, nor that we post them on the website, because not everybody has internet access. So the public information requests are such that you can come in here and request them, or you can mail in requests.
Then let's be ridiculous, what if I go drive, or I work during the day when your hours are available?
I can mail you the minutes.
Would you please?
Yes, because I want people to participate, but then it looks pretty obvious to people, we have neighbors that won't come to meetings.
Because of that, and I told you that, the meeting in the fall, because they come here, and they're basically sitting, you don't know what's going on, and then you find out things are going on that you know nothing about. Now, I know about the Woodford property because of relatives that are on the board. But that's in having a conversation at a family meal, that's not being a resident. And I was treasurer, I've been the secretary for decades. I did the athletic booster club at the high school for almost twenty-five years. If we cannot get minutes out in any timely fashion, even if it's not required by law, I, I just don't understand. Am I gonna find out when he starts building behind my house if he's been approved? Because I have no access unless I come here and get minute meetings?
Well, the, the property that's adjacent to you, you should be notified before any of that starts, and it's part of the property developer's due diligence.
True.
So that you would be notified on.
But that's only if I'm an adjacent homeowner, my neighbor, who is technically backs up to the moose, but his property is at a ninety-degree angle, he does not get a letter, that's the way the law is. I, I just don't, I don't see where I'm asking for too much to have things posted on the website for residents, when everybody's coming at you with wanting more money, let's add more this, let's do a tip district, let's add to the income tax, let's go to this. I have no objections to adding new police officers, paying police officers, paying defense, but could we maybe have some respect for the taxpayers and the residents of the town who find out? It is twenty-twenty-two, it should be on the website.
Understood, but again, we have two employees who work in this office thirty hours a week each, one of whom is, is in and out of meetings all week, and the other does as much as she can.
And then I suggest.
So we're, we're doing what we can with what we have, we don't have the budget really to add that much more. We just don't, we're, we're a very small entity. We're a very small entity.
I understand that. But I guess maybe because I worked for not-for-profit for zero money for 25 years, I don't see where it's a big deal to get out minutes or... I don't understand. And the other thing, I'll go through the town marshal, is there is a house, I won't even say the name of the street because I think you sort of maybe addressed it, that has had garbage piled up in front of their garage. This takes months to make a decision?
Actually, I just got the...
Is this a health issue?
I just got the notice of that house. I had, one of their neighbors contacted me directly and asked me to look into it. I forwarded it that day right over to the marshal and he had his staff go over and speak with the resident. So it was addressed as immediately as it could be.
But...
And I don't believe this is the first time because they've asked until at least Easter to start working on it.
But if that's not a health issue to have garbage piled this high on a garage door?
This is why we're asking them to clean it up. And if they don't do it in a timely fashion, then we'll take the next steps.
Well...
And we've done the same thing with other residences within the town.
I guess I just feel bad because I see Trail Creek as a really lovely place that isn't that lovely anymore. And these are stupid little things that could be taken care of. And yet, whatever the legal process, whatever your process is, this is asinine that this is not being addressed. It's absolutely crazy. And if I need to go to the board of health, if I need to start calling down an Indy, I will do it. Because this is ridiculous to have a town where you don't know what is going on, you don't get any kind of minutes, any kind of notices, you have garbage piled this high in front of a house and it's, I know you don't appreciate it, but I'm sorry, the minutes are, there are no minutes for this only commission.
I appreciate what you're saying.
The mission is no minutes for almost a year.
The minutes are here.
Okay. You want everybody that live in Trail Creek to come here tomorrow to find out what goes on, is what you're saying? Only way you're going to find out. That's the wrong answer.
What about people that work? It's impossible to expect people...
We will do our best to get that updated. It's not going to happen overnight, but we'll do our best.
But I'll tell you what, I've served in a lot of boards. I serve on the town of Burns Harbor right now. Those minutes are done within two days, they're sent to the group, they're reviewed and they're posted and you could find them for seven years back, every minute, every time, all the time.
And I don't know...
And I'll tell you what, for her to go and send the, and spend the money to do that is wrong when the internet is free.
But I don't understand how, I don't know the difference in size between the town of Burns Harbor and our town. I don't know what their employee count is versus what ours is or anything else.
How long do you, how long do you take to do this for a meeting tonight? Two hours?
Few hours.
Okay, it's longer than the meeting is, right? Okay.
And those minutes are done, we just don't get them posted to the website.
Is there a possibility of getting somebody with community service hours either at the high school, the community prison? I mean, this isn't a difficult thing. If you don't have the time, maybe there's someone you could pick up through a case myth, someone that would be, just come in and just have access to take what you wrote and put it on the internet. I don't...
I don't see all of that being that hard. You say it is. You know what? This gentleman is standing right here. Every meeting already has it. But alcoTV.com.
I got it.
And they are on there.
They are on there, but you cannot find the schedule to tell you when the minutes are...
The schedule's one thing, but all the meetings are...
Well, I've got to speak 24 hours a day. I went and worked on all this.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavina. We'll do our best.
Well, that's a personal preference of our college. I don't have a TV, so, okay? Come on.
Yeah.
I think you understand what we're...
We do understand what you're asking.
The residents of Trail Creek, I think, would appreciate that the minutes be posted. If you want to send it to me, fine, send it to me every month, I'll appreciate it. I'll come to all the meetings, hopefully. But what I would like to see is, can you move it up to a better class than we are today? And right now, we're not there.
We have a lot that we're working on.
I understand.
It's, the last two and a half years have been incredibly challenging for everyone. We understand all that and we're doing our best, you know, having switched employees and trying to get everything back up to speed with what it should be.
One thing, is minutes from last July acceptable to actually outpost it online?
Again, we're working on fixing that.
July of last year.
We'll work on it.
July of last year.
Actually, to Mr. Zerzis' comment though, too, you say you don't have a TV.
I don't care.
But it is out there.
I don't have time to watch TV.
But I understand that, but it is all available on their website also.
But how can you find nobody?
It is.
How can you find...
There is no schedule. It's actually listed under Trail Creek Town and you go, click on that link and all of our meetings are listed underneath the Trail Creek Town.
But not to watch?
Yes, to watch, yes.
Well, I mean, no, like, at 7:00?
No, 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 no. It's an actual video file that you, that you click on and you can see every single one of our meetings at your leisure.
And actually, on our town's website, I believe it is stated that our town meetings are the same day of every month. They're always the third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM.
Well, it's very, very hard to...
That is listed there.
But yeah, for the Alco websites, I actually serve on that board. Those meetings are all available, every single one of them.
I have to research this. I can't find it, so you have to tell me.
I'll send you the link to it. I'll send you that and I'll look into talking to Mr. Schultz and follow up with you on that as well. Any other public comment this evening? Any council comment? I don't think you have any.
I just want to make sure that we are appointing Mr. House to inspect driveways. We have a few of them out there.
I thought that was already done.
I just want to, I want to make sure.
I thought that was, I thought that was part of the engineer's job.
It is, but he wasn't aware of it until he walked in this morning. But we really haven't.
Okay. We haven't really had any troubles to give you to do that with, so...
So I want to make sure we're on the same page.
As long as you understand that.
Maybe that was a conversation you wanted to have with me.
Probably.
Maybe because I told him I didn't have.
And actually, one more thing I wanted to bring up, the refuse department, our contracted refuse, they are not picking up multiple cans again.
I'm even having difficulty with them at this point.
Yeah, we...
Is our contract up this year or next?
Two years.
So then maybe...
Oh, they're definitely... breach of contract.
We need to speak with Gordon instead of Lake Shore at this point.
Yep.
I have spoke with Gordon, but...
I think you need to call Mr. Willoughby on this one to assist with this matter.
Yeah.
Because with the whole large item not being picked up on regular trash days and also them not picking up multiple cans on the days for yard waste, this is out of control.
It is at this point. I have stood tall and protected them with you guys and I...